For the meeting, some comments from the public at this time? Anybody that wishes to ... Sure. Anybody that would like to address the board may do so at this time.
I guess I can say. Many, Kathy's Furniture. We're having a lot of problems with planning board. Seems to be very counterproductive to all businesses, new businesses coming into Ross Point. Really counterproductive here. It was here again tonight, here at the last meeting. And I would think all of you should go to this meeting and see what's going on here. John Cooper was there last time. But the rest of you should go and listen to what's going on here. This is way out of line. A lot of things are going on that are not proper. And we need to change this because the new businesses in town do not want to stand it. This new President, well, please, I talked to Joe. He said, "This is not good." He said, "Really, really?" He had a plan tonight. He's going to buy a piece of land. He couldn't even show it tonight. I'm going to do business. So I think we should do something about the planning board. I don't know what, but something's got to be done. Thank you.
Why don't you come on the planning board, Vinny?
I will.
Would you be interested?
Yes, I would. It's going to be run my way. I came to Ross Point.
Benny, sorry. We've got four members on that planning board and one person else, or five members.
Okay, I will be on the planning board. You're on, Joe. I'll take my vote. But I'll tell you something. I come here 22 years ago. We bought the building. Wife and I threw everything out there, cleaned it all up, did the best we could. And we got, you know, business services. And I told Kathy, "What are we going to do? Who do we got to see to open this place?" She goes, "I guess nobody." What did we do? Put an open sign? And we started our business. That's the way it should be.
I don't think new businesses coming down should have all these headaches. This.
I don't know what the heartaches are. Mr. David, I will tell you this. The state of New York, just a few years ago, says every community will have a planning board. Wow, this is the guidelines. And they're trying to operate by the guidelines. Yeah, maybe they can be tweaked. I don't know. But, you know. We had this new music shop in Ross's Point. Come here three times. I believe it's three times. Never needed to come here. So there's some bad stuff going on in this planning board.
The other thing is that I can tell you that that situation is being looked at. A wild situation for people that are moving in and being looked at.
Well, it's not good. I mean, nobody else wants to speak here. The other business people were here earlier. But it's very, it's not to my advantage to do any of this. This is not going well. This is very counterproductive to all new businesses coming to Ross Point. Very counterproductive.
I don't know. I think they've done pretty good. Myself, if you take a look around.
Go see Joe tomorrow. Go for a walk.
I have talked to Joe. I know what Joe's feeling is. But Family Dollar came in. And they did what the planning board's wishes were and the neighbors' wishes. Dollar General came in. Coffee Shop came in.
Go see Shamble. Shamble wasn't happy. They don't want to come in because there was a planning board problem.
But Shamble don't own that property. He runs it.
Right. But there was a problem there with the planning board. Ray Dupree had problems. He lost $3,000 of rent. Talk to Ray Dupree. Go see the business people in town and talk to them. Because they wanted Ray to leave his business commercial and he wanted it residential. He owned it. Should be able to do what you want, not lose three months' rent with it.
Well, when you have rules and regulations, you should be able to follow them.
Well, it's counterproductive to all the businesses. If you have no business, don't cry. Thank you. Anybody else?
Can I just clarify one thing about Joe Tredwell? He came to see me this afternoon. We did not have an application from him tonight to review. He, I told him, you know, he wanted to just kind of talk to us a little bit about what his plans were. And I told him, I said, "I didn't know whether we would review it or not because we didn't have an actual application." I'll see Joe tomorrow. The meeting ran late. And I will see him tomorrow myself about, you know, how they're talking.
Jerry, could we maybe look into changing the night?
Oh, we do, we do.
That's been what they. I believe there's a meeting Thursday.
Thursday on that.
Well, the planning board is going to, we voted tonight, we decided tonight to have a meeting. Not on a regular meeting night, but another meeting of the planning board members, which has to be advertised and whatever. And we're going to talk about the site planning new procedure. And we've been trying to do that for a while now. And we're hoping, so that we can iron it out about how, how we, what we do for the new businesses that come in.
Streamline.
Streamline.
Vinny, I think you have to understand. The planning board are made up of members of the community that are appointed and volunteer to do this stuff for the good of the community. And they don't think they have a personal vendetta against any one person or any one business. And they try to follow the rules that they're given, guidelines. And they don't, let me finish. They don't always have the answer to that. And they look, I know Jerry is one that always tries to do the right thing. She's very particular and about detail. And she looks to the attorney, our village attorney, and asks him a lot of questions on what's right and what's wrong. Like, sending these applications down to Plasper. Now, the little that I know about it is that the village has no choice. Because it's on a state highway, because it's borders, correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody knows the difference. But if it's not up to us to say, "It's okay." Yeah, we don't know how to go to the county. But the county planning board a lot of times says, "No, it's a local issue." And they send it back to us. Well, that, you know, they only sit, the county only sits once a month, or once a month. So if they sit on the 12, let's say, for example, they sit tomorrow and we have an application, we have, the planning board does, you know, they come here a lot more than just once, twice.
Once a month.
Once a month. So if those times are off and somebody comes in with an application and it's off the day, if it doesn't get to the county for that certain period of time, that's why the, you know, the planning board requests that these things come in a couple of weeks at a time so they can send it down to the county. They'd get the writers' first review though. And then it comes back to the village. It's not the village that wants to do this. It's that we're mandated to do this by the state. And these guys are volunteering their time to do this.
Wait a minute.
Just let me, sometimes they get it wrong. Sometimes their attorney tells them, well, like, take, for example, I hate to use Joe Tredwell, but he's the one that comes up first. When he submitted his plans for his building color, was it Jerry Faber that sat down and told him what color he was supposed to have? No. Joe, the one that gave us the colors. To say that they weren't going to be brown and red, they were going to supposedly be an off-colored gray. But yet, when he made the construction on his building, it wasn't what he applied for. So was it Jerry's fault? Now he put her in a predicament. What's he going to do? How, what is the planning board going to do? Wait a minute, we got plans. And if everybody in the village says, "Well, yeah, we're going to submit these plans, but in all actuality, we're going to do something different." Well, that's not right. It's not Jerry and the planning board's fault. All they want is to rectify. Now, you can say that Mr. Renee came in here and said, "Doesn't matter what color you have to put in there." Right? But they didn't know that. Did you have any idea that Mr. Renee was going to come in and tell you, "Doesn't matter"? What was the last thing that you, the last thing that I remember talking to us about was that, you know, this guy puts us in a terrible situation now. He sends us applications and now he's making us what? How do we answer this? That's all he wanted to know. How do we answer that? And if, yeah, maybe it took longer than what we wanted. But did Joe Tredwell change his color in his building? Is he allowed to go with that color? Yes. Was it not timely? Did it hurt anybody? It might have got us all upset, but it didn't really change the fact that he is going to have his colors. It's not always the answer that we want. And we do have discussions. But I'll tell you one thing. If you're not happy with what's going on in this village with the downtown revitalization, then I suggest, because this is going to come up again. I sat on his code review with Jerry with a group of volunteers. They came in. There's Mark Berry. He's very outspoken. He has his view. There's Matt.
Where?
Where? There's myself, Kelly Penfield. There's Jerry. There's Dick Baker was there, Al Nahtell. There's a lot of people from the, and you're allowed to come, you're more than welcome to come and voice your opinion.
You're talking to revitalization. I'm talking to planning boards. Two different things.
It's all going to, yeah, but Vinny, you've got to understand. We're going, we're addressing the zone definitions and the planning.
And the lawyer said the color didn't matter no more. You don't even have to put a color. You can put any color you want.
That's fine. That's a clarification. Well, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about a whole review. And this is going to happen right before your eyes, as I'm sitting here.
Well, I'm going to be on that board if I can.
Well, and I want you to come to these, to these meetings that we have. Because up until now, you can ask Jerry. We've sat at these meetings and we've had a lot of discussion. A little thing like internally lit signs. You like to have internally lit signs or not? You know how long we spent on those things?
If you pay taxes on your building, you should be able to put signs wherever you want.
But we're going to have a consensus of opinion.
And if you're not taking any money from this revitalization, you should be able to put a sign where you want, what colors you want. If they're paying you to do it, it's a whole different story. But when they're not paying you, they can't tag you colors or nothing.
Vinny, all I can say about that, we're not going to argue this point the whole night. What I'll tell you is, please come to those meetings.
And the thing that aggravates me, it took three months for this man to open this guitar shop.
Well, like I said, there are mistakes that are made.
Yes. And now tonight in the craft shop.
Does he not have his shop open? He's had his shop open.
The craft shop being open? Well, they did better. They opened it tonight. You can open it. First time they come to the board, so open the shop.
Well, so we're learning. I mean, everything is a progress, you know, it's a.
Anyway.
Anyway, that's.
Gentlemen, if we're going to, to give you an idea. Better this, go ahead. And we're not going to come up with assumptions until we have that review of the codes and stuff to get it straightened out.
Well, you should, you better come to these public meetings. There's going to be public meetings. We had a public meeting on the railroad, there wasn't anybody here? There's never anybody that comes to these things that everybody has.
Oh, there wouldn't be people here.
There were people here.
Well, yeah. Everybody that was back in it, you know.
There were 20 something, if I count them.
Yeah, there were, I'm sorry, I take that back. There were a lot. But when it comes to these meetings, when we're having revitalization projects, we had one at the church basement. That's where it all started. There were a lot of people, a hundred something.
Glad you're going back to two years.
Right. But I mean, it's still going on. But we're rewriting the code, Vinny.
Well, that revitalization, not into that, I'm into the planning board. It's all.
That's all part of it. It's going to be, some of the guidelines that are in that revitalization design are either going to be adopted into the code.
Well, there shouldn't be.
Well, then you should come and express your opinion along with the other business people. We're not saying, we're not taking sides. We're just saying what the general population wants in this village and what's going to go.
You guys should all have been at this planning board meeting tonight and listened to the business people in here. It was not good. There were not one happy one.
Where were those business people when we had all the meetings on this stuff? And we, you know, there was over 200 people at those meetings on my right off and on down to church basement. Broke up into committees, right, and groups. And they put up the guidelines and the consensus of opinion, those guidelines are what's in that right now. That is the whole village. It's not just the business people. So, again, we're going to review it. We noticed problems and we got to straighten them out.
Vinny, I just want to tell you what my position is on business. I think the more business, the better. No, I'm really pro-business because my dad ran the business. We're going to be coming in for some tough times here. So we've got to be friendly to new businesses coming in.
There you go.
It's very important. Because the more people, the more business, the better. So that's my, I mean, I'm not speaking for the rest of the guy. That's my personal opinion. We need, we want small businesses. We don't know what's going to happen.
All right, gentlemen, let's continue. Do you have a chance to begin? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Just one thing about the applications going to the county. When we first started, when the planning board first started, we were having a meeting. We wrote the application and then sent it to the county. And that was the one that was delayed, an extra month. So the board decided to be fair to the businesses and not pull them up for an extra month. We said, as soon as Mickey gets the application, if it needs to go to the county, it goes right up. We don't wait until we have a meeting. So basically, a person who has an application, if the county has returned it, one meeting, and that's it. That's all that they take. The Sharon one tonight, one of the board members last month made a motion to do a public hearing, which was optional. And so that's why he had to come back tonight. If we had not done that, he could have, we probably would have, we would have taken it to Plasper. I just wanted to clarify about the county thing. So, I mean, the board did, does try to work with the businesses to make things, to streamline the process and make them go a little bit quicker. I mean, we don't want to come and talk about the same thing every month either.
One thing I got to say for.
All right.
You know, when you go, when a new business comes in town and they come in front of a planning board, the planning board ought to look at this guy and say, "How can we help you?"
Nothing much they can do, except.
"How can we help you? What forms can we, what can we do to expedite this and get this in action? And work directly with the businessman to make him go in business and do whatever you got to do if it's not, you know, doing, damaging a neighbor's property or anything like that? Just should be implemented at that time and not aggravating the guide whatsoever. What can we do for you?" That's what they ought to ask the man. Like Bobby tonight, Mr. Bobby was here. He started a business craft shop. I'd be here to board and say, "Mr. Bobby, welcome. What can we do for you?" They didn't know. Nobody said nothing. Any business in Ross's Point should be a big plus.
All right, anybody else want to address the board? May do so at this time. If not, I'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. You all have copies of the minutes, boards? Is there any addition or deletions?
I'll make a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes of November 2nd, 2009.
Moved by trustee Jefferson. Seconded by trustee Burke. Any discussion? Those who are in favor of both parties, it's a vote of aye.
Aye.
Bills. Do you have a copy of the bills? Are sent, is there any addition or deletions?
Yes, there is. The first one is the bill for Montgomery Hole's Hook and Ladder. On the list of bills, it says $630. This is reimbursement for quad expenses. It should read 92595. We have a bill, New York State Sales Tax for 95558. That's the October sales tax. And we have a bill, the FIA Card Services. Total bill is 47904. That's for NIPO meeting expenses for the mayor. State school expenses for Junior, Danny, and Eric. Water plant schooling for Danny Gay. And parts for the water truck. Driver's door and driver's mirror. And also I also want to point out that the bill on here for Marvin Bayshard is the last payment on the van stand. The other two prior bills are not going to front the board meeting, but we had to make a decision to cut those checks without board approval. But they've been cut. And this is the last one. Whether the job's finishing or not, I'm not really sure.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills as amended tonight.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson. Seconded by trustee Burke. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Correspondents?
The first letter I have is, "I would like to thank you all for the installation of a streetlight in front of 53 Smith Street. I wrote to your office, October 8, 2009, requesting the streetlight be installed. And we received a response by October 9, 2009, saying that the light would be installed. The light was installed last week and it's great. I spoke with the gentleman before they started working and advised them how pleased my family and current neighbors would be that the light was being installed so quickly. My 12-year-old, who is constantly up and down Smith Street on his bike, advised how much safer he feels with the light when it is dark out. Again, thank you on behalf of my family and my neighbors who walk this area on a daily basis." This is from Amy Brown at 53 Smith Street. The next letter I have is from Tagmatic Volunteer Fire Department.
That's Taconic.
Taconic. It says, "It is with great gratitude that a Taconic Volunteer Fire Company accepts your generous gift of the hovercraft that you recently donated to us. This hovercraft will be a great asset to our rescue operations. We do have several large lakes in the area and have had a number of rescue incidents in the past. This will enable us to do more efficient and quicker rescues in the future. We hope we will use this more in drills than in actual rescue work, but having it gives us peace of mind, knowing that we have the tools to do the job. It is a great thing to know there are brother firefighters like you who go beyond your own territory to help others. Again, thank you from all of us." And the next letter I have came in this evening from Kimberly McGoldrick. It says, "Dear Mayor Rivers, we all know that our area is struggling with the economy, but at the same time, we also have families that are also struggling with moving a loved one or one of their family members have been sent to fight for our country. As a mother who has lost a child from an automobile accident, I would like to reach out to our area and start a program that can bring these families together to represent their loved ones. With this, what I would like to do is start a program called The Memory Tree. This is where families can put information on an ornament of their loved one. I will set up my email where I can receive all information of the family members that they would like honored. I will make the ornament for them to put up or they can bring their own. I will contact area businesses, put out flyers, put in church call attempts and in the newspaper. And I'll be working with our area teen girl scouts from Champlain to Ross's Point. I would like to do this on the 18th of December at 7:00. Thank you for your time with this matter." And when I spoke with Kim, I think that her, the thought was to probably use one of the trees, like maybe one of the village by the gazebo or something to hang these ornaments on through the holiday season. I think that's the intention that she has, so. The board's in agreement with it.
So we make a motion to that. I'll make a motion to allow. Second. Moved by trustee Baker. Seconded by trustee Jefferson. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Miss Penfield. I'm looking at her, couldn't even say her name. Reports of the mayor and the board trustees. First thing on the agenda tonight. The annual CP rail holiday train will arrive in Ross's Point on Thursday, November 26th, July 21st. I realize that's Thanksgiving, but they're doing it going south. We'll be the first stop on the train this year. So again, this year, we'll be stopping at on the way south along, allowing the residents of Ross's Point to enjoy the entertainment. So if you can be up there, bring that canned food for the food shop. That gives your ticket in. They also give a sizable donation to the food shop, that train. And it is quite a sight to see if you haven't seen it. Second thing is the annual parade of toys sponsored by the village of Ross's Point will be scheduled for Friday, December 4. Everyone's invited to meet at Ross Park at 6:45. And then we'll parade over to the Peg Huprow Memorial Gazebo where we will sing songs and do the usual. And there will be hot chocolate and cookies and listen to the children's storytelling. Marked in two days down. Next thing on my agenda is an approval for Veterans Park and Gateway Corner Beach Concept Sketches for submittal to D O S. And I believe you all have copies of them. Anybody wishing to see them? If you do so, then I'll write there. They need a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion to request approval for Veterans Park and Gateway Concept Sketches for submittal to D O S.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson. Seconded by trustee Cooper. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, that's it for me. I don't see any supplemental, thank God. Trustee Jefferson.
Nothing on my agenda tonight, Mayor Rivers.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Jefferson. Trustee Burke.
I've received a letter from president of the library board, Andy Ewert. He, I'd like to make a motion to recommend Donna Bohmil as the appointed permanent librarian. The letter reads that, "In my capacity as president of the board trustees of the village of Ross's Point Dodge Memorial Library, I request that you appoint Donna Bohmil as librarian. She having been declared eligible for employment as such, but a personal requirement could account." I'd like to welcome, would see, motion I make to have Donna Bohmil as the permanent employee in the village.
Second. Moved by trustee Burke. Seconded by trustee Jefferson. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say that everybody I've talked to is really, really happy with the librarian. We've made some real good, positive changes there. Younger kids are using it. It's good for the village.
Just ran into Ed Hook there at the Isle Mentors though, and our assistant equipment ran into the map for that. And he's very satisfied with all the extra work that Donna has been doing. It really has enhanced his program, especially with some of the reading programs. He's very happy with it.
Any other discussion? There being no other discussion, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Burke. Trustee Baker.
I have nothing on my agenda.
Thank you, trustee Baker. Trustee Cooper.
I'd like to request an executive session to discuss police department personnel.
Moved by trustee Cooper. Seconded by trustee Jefferson. Roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Burke.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Cooper.
Aye.
The mayor votes aye. Anything else? John?
That's it.
Thank you, trustee Cooper. Reports of others. Carol?
I have nothing.
Arson? Ryan?
Yes, just an update on what the street department is doing. They're getting their plow trucks and their snow equipment ready for the season because it's just around the corner. And they're installing four hydrants. Their end of line, dead end lines that are in certain developments, you'll see them today, installing hydrants so they can flush the lines, the water plant can do that. It's a request from Gary. I mean, we had dieters now for quite a few years and we're making a good attempt to get them in before the cold weather. And you'll see the line through, the electric department is out doing their stray voltage testing. So if you see them at night going around with a little beater, walking from pole to pole, it's just our annual testing that we have to do every year. We have a few more streetlights to put in. We added the one up on Smith Street from Mrs. Brown, which you got the latter on. We have a couple more to put on Academy Street. And the week before December, well, let's see, this week we're doing stray voltage. Then we're going to do the Christmas light, just to give you a little schedule of what's going on. Because our next meeting is not till December. So I know people have been asking about when we're taking the lines down on Moose Avenue and State Street and Academy Street. It will be taken down after the Christmas lights are up. And I talked to, in our meetings today, in our, we had our supervisory meeting with the mayor and trustee Cooper, the president. We talked about the flooding up in Beechwood. We've been doing a little searching around and planning on what the problems are up there. And it used to be an open ditch on the school property. And through the years, it got extended on little by little. Every 100 feet, they always put on a little piece of pipe and then buried it. But what they did is they took a 24-inch pipe and they reduced it to 18, then they reduced it to 12. So you have like a bottleneck effect that's going up that school property. But we found that just the pipe that we have in stock, if we wanted to, like the first week of December, we could go in there and replace the 24-inch pipe all the way up. I figured to do half the project, it was like 500 feet with. way up, I, I figured to do half the project, it was like five-hundred feet with the material that we have in stock, and it would make a good attempt of correcting the problem up there. And I really didn't wanna wait till spring until the mud season, and then we're gonna budget in June to, for the rest of the project to finish it, all the way up to the parking lot. I just wanted to get the board's approval on that, because it wasn't a budgeted item, but it is stuff that we have in stock, there's a few little things that we need, and we checked in the budget, and we have money in our current account to buy a couple of keys and a couple fittings that we need. It's mostly man-hours, except, you know, it's gonna take maybe a week or two to, to get the project done. And as far as we can go, I mean, if we have, if we can do half of it this year, we'll be ahead of the game through the spring for the flooding, and it makes a good attempt of us putting our best foot forward and trying to solve the problem up there.
I'll make a motion to do that project.
Second. Moved by trustee Baker, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion?
We, on anybody's property there, or is that all?
We have a right-of-way through there, it's a right-of-way for...
For that type of stuff?
For that type of stuff.
They have a right-of-way in that, that ditch line, it's ours.
And I talked to Doug, I talked to Doug Ferris today, just to make sure that he was on board, because, you know, he is the engineer, and he thought it was a great idea. Especially to lay that, you know, flatten that pipe out a little bit, get some depth, larger size, and get more flow down through it.
That never happens again up there.
Well, I, I think it's gonna solve a lot of the problems, 'cause, you know, you can push a lot more water down a twenty-four-inch pipe than a, than a twelve-inch, and it's not gonna back up so much, so, I mean, any little bit that we improve it's gonna help.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote by you, to send it by.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
I had one other thing. Right, you went for it? I was wondering if the board would declare surplus the number four dump truck in nineteen-ninety, it was supposed to be surplus probably five, six years ago, when we bought the number five pick, dump truck, and it's to the point where it needs a lot of bodywork, it needs brakes, and you shouldn't put any money into it, it was, you know, we got this much out of it, it's time to let it go and see what we can get for it and surplus it.
I'll make a motion to surplus that old truck.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burks, is there any discussion?
Are there any, anybody surrounding that might be able to use it?
Put it out there, put it for sale on it, whereas somebody will build a dollar-two-eighty on it, and they'll get all set. Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote by you, to send it by.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Drain line.
Ryan?
I thought you were bringing that up too.
The thing that we met with Doug today, this...
Oh, about, okay. It's the sewer line that goes from the back of the village office, office down to...
It's cut out.
The North End Pump Station, everybody got a copy from the Vermont Pipeline Service?
Yeah.
Apparently, they, when they went down through to inspect the pipe, they found that there was a lot of debris, a lot of stones, gravel, in this pipe, so Doug Ferris made a recommendation that he put, he puts together a, like a bid sheet, a spec sheet, and having a company come in to clean it with a high-pressure cleaner and like a back truck to take all this gravel out of, out of the pipe and camera it. So we, we know we have a point to start from, 'cause it, it was done five, six years ago, we don't know if it was cambered, we don't know if they got it all, this way we would know that the pipe is clean, and we have a point to go by. We had it inspected, and they said that the pipe was in good shape, it's just there was a lot of settlement in the bottom of it.
And so, they got one point, it says it's halfway full of gravel and stone, it don't move much to a pipe.
How, how big is that?
That's the pipe in back of my store.
Yeah.
Eighteen-inch.
Eighteen-inch. And it's causing some backup on...
Is it, is it not in a mission where we have to replace any of that?
No, it's in good condition.
It's in excellent condition.
I will have a copy sometime this week, this is black and white, and I have a picture of the pictures they took in there, so you can actually see, you know, where the stuff is, and they know exactly where it is, where it is, but he doesn't think we need to do the whole thing, it's just one section. The only problem with that pipe is when there's a lot of rain and a lot of, you know, a lot of melt, that's the only time, it's just, it's a lot of storm. We haven't had any problem the last three or four years, so we got some infrastructure, something happened.
I pooped some water out the other day on it.
But, what do they do, flush it or vacuum it out?
Oh, I don't know what we're gonna do, but Doug suggested that he put together a bid package, that make sure that pipe is clean, and when they get done to camera, they'll throw us that it's clean. See, we didn't get that last time.
We don't know if they got all the gravel out of it last time, you know, they, like, you know, we can flush it with our machine, but we can't pull back the settlement and the gravel, so they have different...
Our machine runs over top of it, I think.
Yeah, our machine just runs right over top, where they have machines that will clean the pipe and, and pull the material back and vacuum it out at the hole at the same time.
Like a rotor ruder or something.
Yeah, something...
And I'd like to see a motion to have Doug go ahead and specify specifications from the flood, but then, we really need to do this, because there's a few agencies in the state that are on our back, namely the DEC.
What's the timeframe of this, can I try to do it as well?
No timeframe, we'll get the specs, we'll get out the bid, take a look at the bids, see if we have the money to do it, and then go from there. So far, DEC is working with us, so we have to show that we are willing to go forward.
Yeah.
Make a good fee, okay, I'll make that motion.
Does Doug have any idea with that, something they're not...
For that once, you know, how far they go, you know?
Yeah, how far they gotta go. It's gotta go to the back of town, so...
No, they don't have to go away, no.
I'll make a motion to allow Doug to, or Brian to...
Brian did already.
Second.
I have a motion made by Brian, trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burks, is there any discussion, board? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by you, to send it by.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Excuse me, mayor, is this just to let Doug go ahead and...
Just to rent the specifications.
Okay.
We're not, we're not going out to, we'll rent the specification and review it, and then we'll have to advertise it for bid.
Okay.
You led something, Arsen?
Yeah, I forgot to bring up, I want a permission to cut a, a purchase order for a new copier for the cord system, the one that was down here died after ten years, they brought the one that they were using in the office down here, and it should be all right for what they're using it for, even though the top feeder doesn't work, so the one they have at the office now is one they got in the state grant, but it's just one of those copier printers that you hook up to from a computer, like, and they've got a bunch of lines in there, it's running a service contract on it, so we got a price, it's nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars, and that's with a trade-in of four-seventy-six for the old one, but they're still gonna, even though we got rid of the old one, they're still gonna give us that discount, and the service contract will be two-twenty-five year, which is actually twenty-five dollars less than what it was before. And they have money in the budget, and we just gotta move it around, so, yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burks, is there any discussion?
Tony has grown up and downstairs to get a, get a copy for the cord there, and I just can't see having somebody run them downstairs, I mean, that's just, that's not too, you're painting something out, that's pretty ridiculous, I really should put something in there.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote by you, to send it by.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Open the, open the needs of the public this time, anybody wishing to press the board, may do so.
I have one more request for the board, would you advertise for alternates for the planning board?
Yeah, I've already told Carol to do that.
Yeah, since John Huprow resigned, we don't have any.
Already have told Carol, do that.
Make sure we give anyone.
And we got the camera now.
Right?
We gotta go to school for that stuff? Yes. He's good.
Yeah. Good.
Just kidding.
Big joke.
No, no, hey, listen, no, no.
Kids will be all, that should be ongoing, so...
All right, nobody wishing to press the board, I need a motion for German.
Mother, okay.
Go ahead.
We got it, no, we got it, exactly, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, I forgot about that, it wasn't on my sheet. Okay, I have a motion for recess, five minutes.
Second.
Moved by trustee Burks, seconded by trustee Baker, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. We're in recess for five minutes.